Good morning and welcome. I'd like to call the September 16th Planning Commission meeting to order. Would you please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance of the Flag?
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Item number three is the roll call.
Commissioner Norah Adukas.
Here.
Commissioner Steven Anstott.
Here.
Chair Leo Molliter.
Here.
Commissioner Richard Rodriguez.
Here.
Item number four is for public comments. This is a time set aside for comments by citizens on matters not appearing on this agenda. I haven't received any cards, so I'm assuming there's no public comments. Item number five is LC 10-0001 and LC 10-0002, Timber Canyon Ranches, a limited partnership, and Hardison Family 1990 Survivor's Trust and Hardison Family 1990 Exemption Trust applicants. On these procedures, we hear first from the planner, and then we -- if we have any questions, then we have an open hearing, and we hear from anyone who wants to testify for and against it. And we close the public hearing and deliberate. So we'll hear first for the planner of this agenda item, and it's Andrea. Good morning.
Good morning. I'm Andrea Ozde, the Land Conservation Act Planner for the county. This is my third year in this program, and it's an exciting year this year. We only have a couple of contracts, but we're going to continue this program as best we can and see if the board will allow us to do that this year. The request this morning is for the annual review and approval of the Land Conservation Act contracts for 2010, which are two separate contracts, and also zone change number ZN Quick history on the LCA program. It was introduced by the state in 1965, and it was introduced in order to protect open space and agricultural resources in exchange for giving property owners reduced property taxes, and therefore we could encourage having open space and continuing in the state, and also food production would also be encouraged. The county first introduced the LCA guidelines in 1969, and we've been going gung ho ever since and have quite a bit of land in the LCA program, about 129,000 acres. The tax reduction calculation that the assessor's office uses is based on a very complicated formula that we are really not involved with, but the assessor's office is always trying to figure out the best way to apply that. It depends on state tax law, and it's also reliant on the land use, the contract length, and proximity to a city. The general range is about 10% to about 35%, and 35, the high end, would be for the 20-year contracts, which we don't have too many of. Nonrenewal. The contracts are in effect, they constantly nonrenew every year, so it's a self-renewing process, and the only way to come out of a contract is to issue a notice of nonrenewal, and that can be initiated by the property owner or by the county, and typically that's done by the property owner. Historically, I've given you a map that shows the contracts coming out in the next five to 10 years. That's not available just yet because the deadline for that, for applying for it each year, is October 1st. We haven't met that deadline yet, so I will provide that to you when the time comes. Right now, it looks like we have one in. There's an application in for 127-acre property up in Wheeler Canyon in Santa Paula, and this is the first nonrenewal in the last three years, so we've been holding pretty steady. And we do have a big amount of land coming out. At the end of this year, it's about 1,200 acres. Eligibility for properties to come into the LCA program. For agriculture, there are different standards for open space and for agriculture. This year, we only have agricultural contract proposals, and they need to establish they are in commercial agriculture and that they need a minimum area requirement. The subvention report is prepared by the assessor's office each year to the state, where hopefully we collect some of the -- just a partial reimbursement of the property taxes that the county has lost as being part of the LCA program. This year, we're not expecting any of the subvention payments to come in. Last year, we also did not. In 2008, it was about $330,000 that we received from the state. The 2010 proposals, we have two. One is in Ojai, and that goes along, it's associated with a zone change from OS 40 to AE 40, because there's a requirement that all LCA contracts for agriculture are zoned AE, so that is the purpose of that zone change. It's a 40-acre lot. It would not be subdivided, it could not be subdivided any further than it could right now, and it's not increasing density at all. The second contract is a lot line adjustment. It goes with the lot line adjustment, and that is to correct for a structure that was built too close to the property line on the neighboring property, so therefore the configuration of the LCA contract needed to be adjusted to accommodate the lot line adjustment. And the contract area descriptions and maps are available in Exhibits 2 and 3 for you. We're adding about 44 acres to the LCA program this year. As I mentioned, we're also losing 1,200 acres at the end of December, and that leaves the county with a total of about 129,000 acres. All of the 2010 contracts comply with the State Williamson Act, the county LCA guidelines, the general plan, and the zoning ordinance. Last week, I visited AIPAC, the Agos Policy Advisory Committee, who unanimously approved the contracts and recommended that you do the same. And the Board of Supervisors' hearing is scheduled for November 23rd. The Planning Commission recommendations will be brought forward to the board for the final decision, and the board has also asked last year for the opportunity to discuss the LCA program, figure out if we will continue the program or if we adjust it in some way. They would like to just have the opportunity each year to take a look at that. So far, what we have seen is just a very strong support of the program and hopefully continuation of it. Public notice of these contracts was placed in the Ventura County Star, neighbors within 300 feet of each of the properties, and the Planning Director of the City of Fillmore because the second contract associated with the lot line adjustment is within one mile of the City of Fillmore. There were no phone calls or letters or emails provided to me as part of the public preview process, and we recommend that you take the recommended actions listed on page 17 of your packet, and that you adopt those recommended actions as stated in the staff report. And that concludes my presentation.
Thank you, Andrea. Before we open up to questions, I'd like to have declarations, I'm sorry, disclosures. At this time, I would like to ask East Planning Commissioner to state on the record whether or not he or she has received any oral or written ex parte communication regarding this agenda item that is not already contained in the record before us on this matter. Please disclose the substance of the information, only if that information is not contained in the record before us on this matter. Commissioner Adukas.
I have no disclosures.
Commissioner Anstott.
No disclosures.
Commissioner Rodriguez.
No disclosures.
And I have no disclosures. Thank you. Are there any questions for Andrea? No questions? Thank you very much. Then I'll open the public hearing. I have no speaker cards for, against this. So I'll close the public hearing. Any comments, closing comments by staff?
No.
Thank you very much. At this time, we will deliberate. Do I have any recommendations or any motions or any other discussion from the commissioners?
I would like to move to adopt the recommended actions.
Second to motion.
We have a motion in second to approve the recommended actions. Are there any other comments or discussion? All in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carried. Thank you very much, Andrea. The next item on the agenda is item number six, and it is AP 10-007, Lindsey Nielsen, appellant. This is an appeal of the Planning Director's May 7, 2010 decision to approve planned development permit number LU 09-0132. This permit would authorize the construction of an 8,000-square-foot garage on the subject lot. The case planner is Christina. Please begin, Christina.
Commissioner Molliter.
Yes.
I understand that there is going to be a request for a continuance. I'm not sure if you want to hear that first before you hear the staff's presentation.
Would that be the commission's pleasure to hear the request for continuance? Yes, then, please, let's hear that request for continuance. Would you please state your name and address, please?
Yes, Chairman Molliter. My name is Lindsey Nielsen. I'm an attorney representing the La Cumbre community. We were informed yesterday that Commissioner Wesner, in whose district this is, would not be here today. I had -- staff had indicated that we might want to have him present because there are policy issues. This isn't a dispute over a wall. This is some policy issues which affect that community specifically. I would request that this be continued until such time as Commissioner Wesner would be present. I understand you have a quorum, but in somewhat reliance on my discussions with staff, we seem to believe that it was likely that it would be continued until Commissioner Wesner was present. As a result, we have about 20 people that didn't come this morning, but we're prepared, we'll go forward if we have to. We would ask, however, for a continuance at such time as we could have either a full board or specifically Commissioner Wesner.
Commissioners, any reaction? Do we want to hear from Mr. Markham or his representative?
Yes.
Yes, that's fine. Okay. Could you state your name and address, please?
Good morning. Russell Madell, address 2629 Townes Gate Road, Suite 230, Westlake Village, California. We would oppose the request for a continuance. We're all prepared to go this morning. There are no policy issues that are involved here, and we believe that you are perfectly capable and have a quorum to make the decisions that need to be taken care of here. So we're prepared to go. We've brought our people, and we believe that you should just proceed. I don't think we need to have the entire board. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, I think we have to take a vote on the continuance. Yes, I mean, I'm not going to call for a vote right away.
Mr. Nielsen, you indicated that you had some belief this matter would be continued and didn't have people come based on that? Is that correct?
Yes.
What representation was made to you?
That we were entitled to request the full board to hear it previously to that in speaking with staff. Staff said there are issues that really do need to be brought to the commission. This is an issue, we believe, with all respect to Mr. Madell, that does involve county goals and matters which are more than just arguing over a wall or something like that. It talks to the heart of the community. Mr. Wesner represents the Somas community. This is something that's community-wide, and we think that it is important. We did have, I realize it's always a gamble, I know you're a lawyer and you never know what a court's going to do, but it was my firm belief that we were entitled to the full commission and as well as could request that the commissioner involved certainly be here because it's his district. If it doesn't stop at the Planning Commission, we felt that the supervisor in whose district, whose representative should have at least heard the arguments. And so as a result of that, perhaps I took an educated gamble that it would be granted. But if it's not the board's pleasure, then I guess we will move forward.
I guess I have, if a representation was made, and people are not appearing because a representation was made, I would be inclined to continue. Otherwise, I would hear the matter.
Thank you. Commissioner?
Who made the representation to you?
Staff. Staff.
What staff was that?
Ms. Rudart said that it's, you know, we could request it, but you're entitled to request a full commission.
I understand. Okay. So representation was made that, if I could restate what you said, the representation from staff was that he could request it, but ultimately it's up to us to grant that request or go ahead with the hearing. If it looks like it's going to be a 2-2, then we could, you know, postpone the decision at that time.
If I could comment on that, Mr. Chairman? This discretionary permit, it talks about deliberation, and the input of all five commissioners, I think, is important. I mean, I'm, that's my view, you can adopt anything, but I think the deliberation part, we could proceed and take evidence. Mr. -- Commissioner Wesner would not be part of hearing it or nor would he deliberate, and that's a discretionary, that's what a discretionary permit requires.
Commissioner Rodriguez?
I don't have any particular issue with hearing it today, however, hearing Mr. Nielsen's comments, it brings to mind a recent matter we held before this commission approximately a month or six weeks ago, and we had a commissioner not here on an issue that was rather significant, but there was no continuance asked for, and we proceeded. My preference would have been, obviously, that that commissioner be here, but I think it's important for Mr. Wesner to hear and deliberate on an issue that impacts his district directly.
I'd like to make, go ahead.
Well, I don't wish to be argumentative, but the fact is, if you do miss the hearing, you get to get a CD or you can go online and see everything. You still are part of deliberations. So what you stated, it just wouldn't occur if we did move forward today, because we do have a number of people who've taken time out of their day to get it started, and we don't necessarily have to make a decision today, but we might be able to. And I believe that the one that you were referring to was the one in the second district, and I was not here. So I would have liked to have Mr. Wesner's wisdom on this, too, but I think we can go ahead and get started. That would be my desire.
I'd like to throw my comments in at this point. I know it would be an inconvenience to the Markhams because they have people here, but I also feel that this is the appellant that's asking for a continuance, and to me, that's important because they've spent time on this appeal, and if they're not ready at this point to make their appeal and feel comfortable with it, I would go along with the possibility of a continuance. I'm sorry that the other people are out, but I know that the appellant had planned to have quite a few people testify, and I certainly don't see them here. I'm open to any other discussion. I just wanted to make a point that if the vote is 2-2 on the continuance, we will hear this agenda item. In other words, we have to have three votes to continue. Am I correct with that, Linda?
Yes.
Any other comments from any other members before we take a vote on the continuance issue?
My position would be, I'm sure. You're saying you would prefer to hear the matter and then continue it to allow Michael to review the tape and appear and deliberate for a final resolution?
If it appears that we need a third vote, yeah.
Okay. Well, that would require two appearances anyway. I would either hear the matter today or continue it, and I'm inclined to continue it.
Again, I feel that the appellant is not ready at this point, and so that would sway me in favor of a continuance. But is there any other discussion before we take a vote on whether to approve or deny the continuance? All right, so the, there is, I'm assuming we're voting now on whether it should be continued or not. So if we have three votes or more at this point for the continuance, then it will be continued at a time that we'll set up. So all in favor of supporting the request of the appellant for continuance indicate by saying aye. Aye. Opposed?
No.
All right, it's three to one. We will continue this item, and Planning Director, do we have any possibility of when this item could be heard again?
Well, that would be up to, obviously, the Markhams and the appellants to say what date would work good. We have dates on our agenda. We could try to set a date now on a date that the Planning Commission was already meeting if that was agreeable to everybody, so we would have to. We could schedule it to a time and date certain, which would probably be most helpful. What do we have, Danielle, on the agenda?
September 30th. And October 28th.
September 30th works for us. Can you help, I mean, respond?
September 30th is a pretty long day for you already, so we would, there's some pretty substantial items on that agenda date. We could hear this one first, but it would be a long day.
When would be the next date after that?
October 28th.
That's a whole month.
That's just the dates that we have them already, something scheduled, right? We could hear it any day, and we would have to check Commissioner Wesner's availability. Do you have that, his availability calendar?
No.
Let's try to get it, and I think it would be preferable to set a date so then we don't have to legal it again. At least it would be a time and date certain with everybody in the audience understanding when it would be.
I'd be willing to go along with the appellant and the Markhams and yourself, Kim, to find a date that we can meet, and especially that Commissioner Wesner is here for that. So do you want to do that now, or?
I believe Commissioner Wesner is scheduled to be here on the 30th. Is that? Danielle's just checking his schedule.
We're checking on that now.
He'll be here on the 14th.
I'm sorry, will he be here?
She's checking.
September 30th.
Will he be here on the 7th?
Yes.
Okay, so the choices are, if you're all supposed to be here on the 7th, the 30th, as I said, is a large agenda date. We could add it on there. We could make it the first item on the agenda, or you could meet on the 7th, where apparently this will be the only thing on the agenda.
Okay.
You can't do it on the 7th, okay?
So it would be the 30th? Is there any possibility of moving some of those items off on the 30th?
No.
No?
They've been waiting a while.
It'll be a long day, I guess. Commissioners, is that, commissioners, is that okay with you, the 30th? Is that the 30th?
Yes.
Okay. All right, then, this item will be continued to the 30th. We'll now take about a five-minute break. All right, the next item on the agenda is discussion report by the Planning Director on board actions and items the Planning Commission may wish to introduce. Kim?
Okay, so I just want to go over your calendar on September 30th. We have an appeal. We have two appeals and a concrete and asphalt recycling facility, so now we'll have three appeals on that date. Yes, it will be a long day. We will put this one first, since they did come to the trouble to come here today. We will put this first, and we'll rearrange for the interpreter to come back on the 30th. A couple of other things I wanted to really check your schedule about and be firm on. We're trying to set the hearing date before the Planning Commission on the Grimes Canyon mining projects. I want to get that heard before the end of the year. We're looking at December 16th for a date, and we need to pick a date.
What date is that?
December 16th.
This is the mines?
These are three mines in Grimes Canyons between Fillmore and Mar Park. So we want to hear them all on the same day, if possible. December 16th is the day that we're shooting for, and we're trying to work back from it to make sure that there is enough time, and so I'm really trying to get a commitment from everybody for December 16th or as much of a commitment as possible.
December 16th.
December 16th.
Yeah, I'm going to be out of town from the 1st to the 10th.
So you'll be back on the 16th? Everybody, the 16th is looking.
16th works for me right now.
Okay.
1-6.
All right, 1-6. And then, Danielle, if you can send out something to Commissioner Wesner, too, to see if we can get a commitment for that date, that will be nice. We can pretty much commit to hearing it on that date, or that's the date we'll absolutely work towards. And then also, there is some training opportunities that I wanted to bring to your attention besides the Planning Commissioners' Conference that Commissioner Molliter is going to. There's also the APA Conference, the American Planning Association Conference. If any of you are interested in going to that, it's November 1st through the 4th in La Costa in San Diego. It's got a full and a really good agenda. If you're interested to it, I'll send you the website so you can take a look at all of the training items that are on there and see if you have enough time to do that. If you don't, because I know that's a big time commitment, a couple of things are happening. On September the 23rd, the American Planning Association lobbyist, Sandy George, is going to be at Ventura City Hall from 2:00 to 4:00 for a legislative update on all things that are happening in the world of planning in SEQA. That's an interesting thing to go to, and then there's a little cocktail party afterward. I'll send you a link to that. It's $25 if you're not an APA member, which I'd be happy to pay for you if you are all interested in going to that. And then January 19th, Ron Bass, who is somewhat of an expert in SEQA and has written many books on it, is going to come in this room. This room is typically packed when Ron comes, January 19th. It's pretty much an all-day session. I'll let you know about that, too, that I'd like to have you attend that if possible. It's a really good training opportunity for lots of people. Lots of planners come from different cities and city managers, board members, and so we usually get a good attendance on that. And so I want to see if you would like to go to that. I want to make sure to reserve your seats, so that's January 19th. That's all things that we have going on right now. Do you have questions for me?
About the ethics training, we got an email saying that it's time for ethics training. Two years ago, I recall just taking it online. It was an online course. Is that not possible anymore? I didn't understand.
I saw, excuse me, I saw that you could take, I mean, in the email that Denise sent out, I thought I saw online, but they said you have to put the full two hours in if you do it online, and so that kind of discouraged me. I thought I might as well come, but I think it is possible online if you looked at Denise's email.
Is that correct? It's available online? Because what I understood is that it was not, because the two-hour thing was an estimate of time that you had to sit in front of a computer, but if you're a fast reader, you could get, yeah, you could breeze through.
You know, I'm not really sure, because I gave that whole thing to Denise to manage because there's a lot of people in the department that need to be trained, and they all need to be trained somewhat differently.
to be trained somewhat differently, but I will check in with her, and I'll send you an email for confirmation or not whether it's possible.
Yeah, the online training, I thought, was really good, and that's the way that information goes in best for me, is to read it.
I think Commissioner Molata is correct. The attachment that Denise sent did allow that option through, just registration through Roberta, I guess, to let her know which one you're going to be, how you're going to be absorbing the information. Roberta Rodriguez, the County Board, Circuit Board.
Circuit Board, okay. Okay. Anything else? No? Short?
Yes, just a comment. Anticipating something on this appeal issue that we just continued, I noticed in the documents, it talks specifically, I think it was an application for the permit by the, by the homeowner here, there's a, I'd be curious to know what a radius of 500 feet is from the point of the property, because there's some comment about whether machinery's running or not, and I noted it said no.
So you want a, you want a radius map? In the presentation that we bring back, you want a radius map of 500 feet from the property line?
Well, from the, well, it could be from the center of the property. It probably wouldn't make that much difference, but the, as I was reading the documents, the application said that there would be no type of machinery or anything like that running, specifically checked off no. I think it was Mr. Markham, is it?
Okay, we'll bring the map.
And I'd just be curious to see what a 500-foot radius is.
We'll bring a map with various radii extending around the building.
Okay, great, thank you.
Anything else?
Is a compressor machinery? Is a compressor machinery?
No, but part of the issue of the appellant is that, is that there'll be, there'll be work going on there.
Let's not talk about that right now.
Sorry?
We can't. We really, you really shouldn't be talking about that.
Thanks.
Anything else for the good? Well, thank you very much. Meeting adjourned.